Next case on the agenda is ZB 2015-06, and that's 5400 Street.
5400 Street?
5400. That's what I have listed.
Do we have a copy of the radius list?
I have a copy of the radius list.
Okay, and it's your comment that these match up with the radius list? Everyone on the radius list has been?
To the best of our knowledge, yes. Everyone has been notified by the radius.
Are you the attorney for the applicant?
I am the architect, yeah.
The architect, okay. And who did the notice?
The owner.
Swear the owner in person. Let's get him sworn in before he answers the question.
All right. Could you raise your right hand, please, sir? With regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be in truth? Could you first speak up and state your name and spelt your last name, please?
Yes, I am Rolando Uzilas. U R G I L E S.
U R G I L E S. All right. Tell me a little bit about the radius list. Did you obtain the radius list yourself from the town?
Yes, actually, the architect was I know to.
Okay. Do we have that list? Sir, while you're looking, who mailed the?
Mr. Rubades.
Okay.
I assume this is one family home, correct?
It is.
And if you're mailing a lot of them?
It is. We have the list?
I have a list.
Okay.
Sir, let me swear you in too, so I can ask a couple of basic questions. Could you state your name and spelt your last name, please?
My name is Edmundo Lopez. L O P E Z. I'm the architect.
Could I just spell your first name, too?
Edmundo E D M U N D O.
Thank you.
Okay. With regard to this application, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be in truth?
I do.
Okay. Before I ask you a little bit about your architectural background, this list that I'm looking at, it's lengthy, and I'm not going to go through it now, but is it your testimony or Mr. Pragali's testimony that everyone on this list was sent a notice that's consistent with the newspaper notice that you handed?
That is correct.
Yeah. All right. All right, we'll mark that A1. And could you tell us a little bit about your background, Mr. Lopez, in terms of your education?
Yes. I graduated from Texas A&amp;M University with an environmental design degree and a master's degree in systems architecture. In 1970, I've been a registered architect in the state of New Jersey since 1982. And I'm currently and actively practicing.
Have you ever qualified as an expert witness of architecture in front of a planning board or zoning board?
I have throughout the state and the states around here.
Okay.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Di Lorenzo?
He's not here right now.
Huh?
He's not here right now.
Oh, good. Oh, yeah, he's here. Frank, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is the problem with this case that the side yards don't conform?
I believe so. I don't have my other view on it.
I don't know.
Yes, the.
And my question is, are they currently existing that they don't conform and he is not expanding any further onto the side yards?
I believe he's putting addition on the.
But I think the addition's going to the back, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, no, he's not making them any worse. No, he's running in line with the existing footprint ago.
Okay.
Good, continue. If you general will look at the site plan, we're not running parallel to the existing building. We had to offset it. So as to at least create a side yard clearance on both sides of the addition. The existing house is a one-story building, two rooms, and one bathroom. One room behaving as a dining and living room area, and the other is a bedroom. And it's tucked up right next to a building. And there's a pavement, doesn't it, parking area on the other side. Obviously, a family of four has a be challenged in living in a residence of this size, so we had to design an expansion to an existing residence. That expansion consisted of two bedrooms upstairs, one bedroom and a bathroom downstairs.
Jared, they're all pre-existing bearings, aren't they, to that I understand? There's a lot of pre-existing bearings around the site. Before happened, now he has.
All I see is just a side yard.
Right, but they're pre-existing for the building itself.
Right, the existing building.
Right.
Yes.
But it still needs a variance on the other one because it's a little short.
Right, that's what I see, yes.
But it's better than it is now, the way it looks.
Right, right.
Because now at least on one part, you have a side yard where you didn't have one before, a side yard behind the existing building. Okay, go ahead.
That's what I have. It will continue to be a single-family residence.
So the side yard setbacks are not going to be made any worse, correct?
That is correct.
Any rear yard issues?
There are no rear yard issues.
No, just the two side yards were.
Okay, and we're okay with height?
Yes.
We're okay with the height. As you can see, on a 233 schedule of regulations, I enumerated RA1 required family material and proposed one family after we have the addition added to it.
And I know you commented about this, Mr. Lopez, but what's existing is basically one-story, a one-story building, one bathroom, one bedroom?
One bedroom.
And you're going to add, you're going to add two bedrooms on the second floor?
That is correct. But our intention is, in order for the family to be comfortable, the two existing rooms, one will probably become a living room and the other a dining slash kitchen. And the bedrooms will be relegated to the addition.
And how about downstairs on the addition?
The same thing. On the first floor, there will be a bathroom and a bedroom. On the second floor, there'll be two bedrooms, as illustrated on my presentation.
So currently, how many bedrooms are in this house before the addition is made?
Well, currently, let me put this out. Currently, the room basically is divided into two segments. One being an existing bathroom and bedroom, and the other being the kitchen.
Lopez, do we have this? Is this in our package?
Yes, it's in your package.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And so our intention is to create an addition that has the setback away from the area that we don't have a setback. And then because the lot is so narrow, the lot being 45 feet, in order to make a viable vertical circulation and a bedroom, we needed at least the space that we have, the 16 feet 6 inches, so that you could viably put the bedrooms in the vertical circulation required for the addition. Okay?
So currently, you have one bedroom in this house?
Currently, it's one bedroom slash living room. And the other is the kitchen slash dining room. That's it, two rooms for four friends, for four people.
Okay, so now we're going to change it to, actually, we're going to change to three bedrooms, what you're saying?
That is correct.
What you're going to do is you're going to keep the kitchen and the dining room, or make the dining room part of the living room, or something like that?
Exactly.
The bedroom part, the front's going to go.
Yes.
You're going to have a new bedroom in the back and two bedrooms upstairs.
That is correct.
With a complete bathroom upstairs.
Complete bathroom downstairs.
None upstairs?
None upstairs. It's a very narrow lot, and the narrow.
Oh, no, it's 25 feet wide, I think?
Yes.
Yes, I saw that. Okay. Yes, you can ask any question you want.
Mr. Lopez, is it fair to say that, given the sort of unique shape of this lot and its narrowness, that anything this applicant wanted to do on the lot would require a variance of some form?
If they would continue their residence there, yes, anything would require.
Because of the shape of the lot, which cannot be alleviated?
That is correct.
Lot is what it is.
Yes, too narrow, that's the whole problem. Okay. Any other witnesses? None? Any questions by members of the public? Questions by members of the board?
Just one. I know it's not much, but would there be access to, quote, "the attic area"?
The attic area in the existing?
In the addition.
In the addition? No, the attic.
I know, it wouldn't be fair.
16 feet 6 inches. You know, you probably maybe have four feet to the bottom of the ridge, so it would be an attic that you wouldn't.
Well, I think you may have access because on the. The picture, there's a window, it's a window.
That was just for air circulation, and just to give the non-core geometry.
Oh, so it's not going to be used?
No, no, it can't.
How about any air conditioning, any outdoor?
Probably, I would imagine, that Mr. Rubades would entertain a central air conditioning system.
Would that be?
The compressor would be upstairs in the attic. Condenser would be, of course, on the armpit.
Got it.
Is the house currently a condition?
No, it is not.
And you don't plan to do it with the addition as of this time?
I don't believe that that's a part of the program.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mafu, do you have any more questions?
No.
Anybody else have questions of the witnesses? Yes, sir?
May I see the plan? I am the owner of.
Can you come up with, and give your name and address and be sworn in? Or actually, unless you give a testimony, you're going to ask him a question?
I was just going to look at the plan.
Oh, that's all you want to do?
That's all.
Oh, okay.
So do I still have to?
Well, if you're going to ask questions.
No, just look at the plan.
Okay.
Who would you say you are?
Manny Marquez. I am the owner of 56 Hanast Street. The direct neighbor.
This is existing units, the site plan is here.
Sir, did you receive notice?
No, I did not.
In the mail?
I'll go on record saying I did not receive notice.
You should wear certified. Was anyone at home that could have signed for a certified letter?
Probably not. Not at 56 Hanast Street, but my current address is 59 Eugene Place. It's the other. I actually rent it too.
Oh, rental, a tenant would not have received it.
Sorry.
Nobody would be sent to him, he's still the owner.
Depending on if he's within, are you within 200 feet of the property? Roughly?
Probably not. I am, there's Lake Street and then Eugene Place.
If he owns a property within 200 feet, no matter where he lives, he's got to be sent a notice.
Correct.
Okay, so is he on that list?
Manny Marquez.
He owns the property.
Not Manny Marquez, which is my father, who owns the.
What number you own?
56 Hanast Street, I own.
What number?
56 Hanast Street.
Is that within 200 feet?
Yes, it's the direct neighbor.
And right next door?
Yes.
Okay, is it on the list with the slips?
Have you lived there?
No, I rent that property.
I'm looking, Jared, I'm looking.
I thought Cam, I thought Mr. Ragel was looking at him, that's why.
What's the last name?
My name, Marquez. M A R Q U E S.
Who's Maria Marquez?
My mother.
Okay, there's one sent to her at 59 Eugene Place.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just not to myself.
Well, you're not the owner, then.
There's one, his address to Manny and sent, sent.
Honestly, I did not receive it, but 56 Hanast Street is not what we live. That's part of the law.
As long as they follow the radius, you know, the list to the letter, then.
Whatever's on the tax letter.
That's all right, because everybody in the neighborhood also told me that this was stolen, so.
Okay, so you have no objection?
Manny and Sandra?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'll tell you what you'll do. We're going to let yous look at everything to make sure there's no problems. We'll take a 10-minute process, and we'll come back in 10 minutes, so everybody can have a break. 15, the downtown of Belvo will now come back to order. Have you reviewed the documents, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay, you're happy? No questions?
Um, no.
Okay. You wish to sum up, sir, or do you have another witness? Or do you want to give additional testimony, whatever you want to do?
I do not want to give additional testimony. I think that we presented our case.
Okay, and there is no member in the public who wishes to give testimony at all? You wish to give testimony?
Yes.
Okay, sir, come on up and give your name and address, and you have to be sworn in.
Okay.
Could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be in truth, so help me God?
Yes.
One more time, could you state your name and spelt your last name, please?
My name is Manny Marquez. Last name, M A R Q U E S.
Thank you.
I am the owner of 56 Hanast Street.
You own it yourself?
Me and my sister own it, yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay. I'd like to go on the record saying that the expansion will cover an existing window, and it would block the complete view of my first-floor tenants. So I am going on record to say that I oppose this expansion. I have a.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Based upon the plans I saw, are you on the side of the existing building or on the opposite side where the driveway is?
I am on the side of the existing building.
Okay, right now, oh, it's open back there. But when he moves it back, there is going to be a side yard, a small side yard, but still a side yard.
Well, approximately four feet, but that tenant will still just see the building.
Anybody in front, is there any windows in front or not?
In front, in the front of the.
On that side of the house?
Yeah, there's in the front facing the street, in the back, and then there's the one window on first and second floor on that side, where adjacent to this current construction.
So there's no space there at all, am I correct? Is this on the property line right now?
Yeah, no space at all. So the window is there.
How far back does your house go?
Approximately, I'm not exactly sure. It's a little over 30 feet.
Okay.
I'm not exact on the dimensional side.
All right, so what you're saying, any windows that he has on that side would always also be blocked by your house?
Depends on how far it goes past that line.
He's going back.
24, 25 feet 4 inches is where our construction would start, which is at the end of the house.
All right.
But the addition is going past.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So this is your side. So if you have, if this point is the same point that your building is, this building is 25 feet, 25.74 feet from here, here. Okay, I don't know where your windows.
It's approximately 25.
25, and then the window starts, or?
It's approximately 25.
And then the window starts. So I see what the issue is, that right now the existing residence is pasted up against his building.
Could you hold up something and show it to the board? Or maybe show up the plans that we have, so we all know where we are. And that's what we have, correct?
Current, yeah, this is what you have. This is the site plan, which is on the first sheet.
Right.
His building, I'm sorry. Manny, Manny's building is, starts at the same corner that his does, and they're both pasted to each other centrally.
Okay.
So they almost have a common property line on that side.
Right.
His, his building has tenants, which they have windows that look out over Mr. Rubades' property. Okay? And unfortunately, although the site windows are to the front and to the rear, there are kitchen windows that align themselves approximately where we are attempting to put our addition. Now, I, we tried to create a side yard of four feet away from this property line just to see if we could alleviate some of that issue, that I did not survey the location of Manny's windows when I put this addition in. But putting the addition in would not mitigate his losing that view or that light for his first and second-floor tenants. I don't believe, like I said, I did not survey where that penetration is in relationship to the existing residence.
Do you both have windows?
We do not.
No, the window, the addition that you're proposing, does that have, that will have windows that look out?
No, they do not. They will not look out into this side yard. The, this side of the building is, is where we have our vertical circulation, which are the stairs, and we have a door that comes out into this four-foot side yard. But there are no windows on this side.
Can I ask you a question? This is a simple way of resolving this. Instead of have four feet on this side, okay, can you have five feet on that side and have less on the other side?
Well, I think that would probably become an issue even in the construction of this, because you would only have a 56-inch gangway to get into, you know, to create your foundations and to put in your framing. It requires real estate on either side of the wall to do that, right?
Well, you would still have real estate on the other side.
But that would be on the blind side, because there's no circulation from the.
I'll come out the other side.
From the street. Yes, I know.
If you make this side wider on a side yard, and you take some away from the other side, wouldn't it be the same thing?
I was trying to balance it.
Because the only requirement is five feet, that's the requirement.
Okay, we could put five feet over on this side. And what would be left over on the other side would be 3 feet 6 inch.
Is there another house on the other side?
There is a, there's a building, I didn't test it on the other side. It's a garage. There is no windows. It's just a straight flat building. We have a garage.
So that's what I'm saying. It resolves his problem, and it doesn't cause a problem with the other side, then? If that's the accurate situation. Because if you're moving it closer to the other side, and it's like, I think there would be 3.6 feet, is that it? Am I reading right, if I had another one on this side? But his, the requirement for a side yard would be satisfied on his side. You only have to have five feet, that's all that's required. Am I right, Mr. Di Lorenzo?
If I need five feet on one, and 14 total, I would need nine on the.
Yeah, so the problem would be on the other side.
Right, you eliminate one variance.
Right, you eliminate the one-side problem, and then the other side would be where the variance is needed. But who cares if it's only your garage? Do you understand where I'm coming from?
I know, yes, sir, I do.
Is that reasonable? That's the best we can do.
By the law, I have no, I can't have an addition.
No, because that's the best I could do for you.
Is that the, what are we, Mr. Lopez, are we talking about the north side of the house now? That would be?
We're going to move this one foot over, it's that simple.
We're going to move, okay, one foot, so there's going to be a five-foot side yard instead of a four. On the what, the north side?
West side.
West side, okay. Got it, so, 4.5.
Unfortunately, the property is 25 feet, that's half of the.
You're the one who's making it this wide, that's what I'm saying. I'm just trying to help out to get you through this, because he's objecting. But technically, there should be no objection from the other side, because the other side has a garage there.
That is true, it's concrete home, or I think it's straight concrete.
Yeah, right? Do you have any problem with this? You're the owner.
No, we don't have any problem with it.
Okay.
My feet rather than four.
Right, and the opposite side would be 3.61, because this is shown 4.61. Any comment, Mr. Di Lorenzo, on this change?
No. No, he's eliminating the variance, so it's less.
So we're doing everybody, we're doing a better job, though.
It's coming more from the.
Correct. Instead of two variances, we're getting rid of one. So technically, that's all we're required to do here, is the one variance, am I correct?
There's only one variance.
There's only one now, you know, we're going to make it five feet on the one side. I believe it's the west side.
So only for the east side?
East side.
Can I make a motion?
Any questions on the witness?
Unless you want to be tempted.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, there was a woman that had, that wanted to give testimony, am I correct? Come on up, man. Yes, ma'am, name and address, please.
Okay, 117 Heckles Street in Belvo, and my name is Ramonita Becchio.
Heckles Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Becchio?
Yes.
Could you spell your name, please?
B E C C H I O.
Thank you, and you swear that the testimony you're about to give shall be in truth? Thank you.
Hello, spell your first name for me, please.
R A M O M I T A.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. The way he's going to build this house is going to cover my view on my yard.
What yard?
My back, his yard and mine, they are facing together.
Are you on the other side of this, gentlemen?
Yes.
The backyard, the backyard.
Backyard.
Towards the back.
Yes.
And it's going to cover the whole view.
Yeah, but ma'am, if I'm looking at the, I don't believe what I'm seeing here. If I'm looking at the plans, you're still going to have, he's going to have a yard of 46 feet left. 46 and a half feet, by the way. So from the end of his.
But if it goes this way, that would cover a lot on the view. If anything goes in there or anybody's breaking in, you can't even see it.
Ma'am, how much of a yard do you have?
To be honest.
How deep is your yard?
My yard from Estetino Comal, I say maybe 4. My yard from Estetino Como, I say maybe 4, 42 feet, something like that.
So we're talking about a space of over 80 feet. If you're 42, your yard is 42 feet from your house to the fence.
Yes.
And his is going to be 46 and a half. You're talking about 88 and a half feet. I don't understand how there could be a problem with 88 and a half feet. A whole lot is only 100 feet from the sidewalk all the way to the back, a legal lot. Am I correct?
Yes.
You're directly behind him, so you're talking about 88 and a half feet. I can't see where you have a problem.
But I mean, the way he's going to build is going to go this way, right? It's going upward.
No, I believe the height, well, the height is, is the height going to be the same as the height of the house now?
No, it's going to be...
No, it's going to be higher.
So yours is only one-story?
One-story house, I have.
All right, so, but the height is allowed in that zone.
And he's going to be like, according to the letter, he's going to be a two home, I mean, two apartments.
No.
That's what my letter says.
It stays in as one apartment, ma'am.
Oh, well, my letter says two apartments.
Where's the notice?
I thought it was a one, and she had two stories.
That's what you said, it's going to stay in one family.
I have the letter.
Is this going to be one family?
Ma'am, can I see the letter? Do you have the letter, would you please?
My family house.
One family, two-story.
I do not have a...
I want to see the letter, so I know what's going on.
I was also under the impression that it was a two-story as well, because that's what I got from the...
Well, she has the letter, I just want to see what letter she has.
Two-story.
The addition is two-story.
I think it says a two-story addition, not a two-family addition.
Yes.
But if her letter says different, I like the note. Can I have the letter, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Residential addition for a single-family residence. The addition will consist of two floors, building footprint of 451 square feet. The first floor will consist of a bathroom, laundry room, and bedroom. The second floor will consist of two bedrooms. The addition will be a single gabled roof, a basketball single composition. The exterior elevation will be a polymer siding. Okay, the basement will be unfinished. The side yard clearances will be non-compliant. The proposed side yard clearances will be 4.6 feet, well, this is, this doesn't say that right. It says 4.6 feet and 4.62 feet respectively, which is not what's on the plans, okay? Because the lot is only 25 feet wide, we request the side yard extensions to make a residential addition viable. Doesn't say nothing about a second family here, ma'am.
Well, according to the way I was reading that, I thought it was a two-family.
You've misinterpreted that they, that they were saying they were adding two floors.
Yeah.
And, and because a residential addition for a single-family residence, you thought the residential addition meant the second apartment? No, it does not. You're misinformed, ma'am. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Give it back to the question. Thank you. Okay, but you're going to have 88 and a half feet. I don't see any problem. And the height is required, is allowed. Am I right, Mr. Di Lorenzo?
Yes, there's no variance to that.
Okay, so that problem is eliminated also. Okay, anything else? Any other members of the public who wish to give testimony? None. Gentlemen?
I'm not there.
Are you at something, sir?
No.
I second.
Okay.
With the restriction, or with the...
Condition.
Condition of being five foot toward the west side, help the gentleman.
Right, sir. About five feet on the side of, what's your address, sir?
56 Hanus.
56 Hanus.
I think it's the west side.
Well, if we say it's five feet from the 56 Hanus, uh, building, um, property line, that solves the problem. There can't be any confusion.
How far away is his house from that property line? His house, how far away is...
Which right is it?
His house is right on the...
It's right on. The addition's going to be off the property line.
I understand that, but I'm going to, how far his house was?
His house is right next to the other house. They're like, almost, you can touch each other, they're so close. They're both on the property line, from what I understand.
Pretty much.
Okay.
Five feet from the property, yeah, 56 Hanus.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the condition of the five-foot side yard on that side, and seconded? No, no living in the attic, exactly. And that's seconded by Mr. Brazil, and can the clerk, please, call the roll?
Brazil?
Yes.
Caruso?
Yes.
Matovano?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Mafucci?
Yes.
Matovano Del Gersia?
Yes, approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.